Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our City Council workshop. The first order of business under City Council briefings is the RACE Grant for Bike Ways and Trail Expansion with Elaine Lin from Planning, Design, and Development from Parks and Rec. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and City Manager Duhaney. Thank you for your time today. I am Elaine Lin, and I am the Active Transportation Planner, as Mayor has said, in the Planning, Design, and Development Division of the Parks and Rec Department. And it is a pleasure to be with you today to overview the Virginia Beach Trail. A special thank you to Councilmembers Abbott, Ross, and Moss, who have co-sponsored a motion in support of this project. Before I begin with the five slides I've brought with me today, I'd like to take a moment to express our extreme gratitude and recognize Councilmember Henley for the years you have dedicated to staff and the BTAC, the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, as our appointed liaison. We're most appreciative for your leadership and your support of Active Transportation.
I would have loved to have co-sponsored this had I known that there was an opportunity.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. And we look forward to working with BTAC's newly-appointed liaison, Councilmember Ross. Earlier this year, I had the pleasure of presenting to you the Active Transportation Plan. I thank you for your leadership and support in adopting that plan as the Bike Ways and Trails component of the City of Virginia Beach's comprehensive plan. And I am pleased to be before you again today in pursuit of implementing the priority project identified within that plan to promote safe and separate transportation routes for all citizens of all ages and abilities. The Virginia Beach Trail is a proposed 10-foot-wide paved-share-use path within the city-owned right-of-way, which was formerly the Norfolk Southern Railroad Corridor. Oh, great, thank you. The corridor spans 12 miles from our western city limit at the terminus of Norfolk's light-rail line through the many residential neighborhoods between Newtown Road and our town center, over two waterways, and ultimately terminating at the Atlantic Ocean. The easternmost 1 and 1/2 miles of trail was constructed in 2007, which leaves the remaining 10.5-mile corridor undeveloped. The project to date remains unfunded. It is our intent to apply for the federal U.S. Department of Transportation RACE Grant. Under prior administrations, this program was known as Build and Tiger. In 2019, we previously submitted a Build grant application for this project. Unfortunately, no jurisdiction in the Commonwealth was awarded at that time. In fact, of the 666 applications submitted nationwide, only 56 localities were awarded. So this is a very competitive process, but all indications point to us having a better chance at award this cycle. The current administration in Washington has placed an emphasis for award criteria on climate, equity, and people-centric projects. As stated in the grant's notice of funding opportunity, this round of applications should reflect this administration's priorities for creating good-paying jobs, improving safety, applying transformative technology, and explicitly addressing climate change and advancing racial equity, all of which we believe the Virginia Beach Trail more than satisfies. The RACE grant application window is now open with a July 12 deadline for submission. This means a very tight timeframe, but with your support, we are confident we can get it done. This slide provides some background on the project. The former Norfolk Southern Railroad Corridor runs east and west through the center of our city. It is a 66-foot-wide, 12-mile-long corridor, which at this time remains unused with the tracks, ties, and rail bridges still in place. The Virginia Beach Trail has been master-planned since the 1981 City of Virginia Beach Bike Ways and Trails Plan and was intended to be constructed alongside the former light-rail proposed project. The easternmost 1 and 1/2 miles of the Virginia Beach Trail is already constructed, as I stated earlier, and what is now currently known as the Norfolk Avenue Trail. It's a heavily-used shared-use path between Burdenac Road and Pacific Avenue. In our pursuit to multiply our local resources and construct this trail at a lesser cost burden to our taxpayers, we propose to submit a RACE grant application for a roughly $15 million total project and consisting of the following scope: to develop a paved trail from Newtown Road to Town Center; this will provide connection to Norfolk's TIDE, the HRT bus system; traverse past our Housing Resource Center; continue through two federally-designated opportunity zones; and connect to Town Center with a pedestrian flyover Independence Boulevard and terminating at Constitution Drive. The Virginia Beach Trail is a local priority project with regional significance, tying into an existing proposed network of trails throughout Hampton Roads, and ultimately providing a multimodal, sustainable, and equitable transportation solution for all residents, our workforce, and visitors to our city. The project is currently designed to the 15% level of construction drawings, and we are considered a shovel-ready project. The design of the trail takes into consideration the possibility of future multimodal needs by only occupying a small portion of the 66-foot width. And again, the Virginia Beach Trail aligns perfectly with the primary selection criteria put forth by the current administration. In 2019, through much dedication, in particular from the City Council-appointed Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, we discovered a tremendous amount of support for the Virginia Beach Trail. Our citizens, community members, businesses, stakeholders, and visitors all love this project, and I truly believe this is one of those opportunities with the potential to change the dynamic of our city in an incredible way that promotes an active lifestyle, the opportunity to get from work to home to shopping without having to hop in a car, and to truly enhance our quality of life here in Virginia Beach. Again, thank you for the opportunity to overview this amazing project, and with that, I am happy to take any questions you may.
It is an amazing project. Any questions, Ms. Abbott?
Elaine, thank you so much for presenting today. It's really exciting. Just to provide a little background of the council, Walter Camp and I worked together on a number of groups with the city, and he had briefed the Historic Kempstil Citizen Action Committee a few weeks ago and mentioned this grant, and then shortly after, mentioned to me that they were no longer going to be pursuing it. So I had inquired with the City Manager's Office to find out why we were not pursuing the grant and requested that this presentation be given to council to consider the pursuit of this grant. And in talking with Mr. Camp and others associated with this grant, they really emphasized to me the importance of getting the council's support for this grant application, and Mr. Camp actually even said the exact words to me that having a full support from a city council has been the item that's been missing in our grant application for pursuing this process. So it would be my hope, I've got a resolution to pass around, that not only I be a sponsor, but the whole body be sponsors on this, because I think it'd be really important, and I think this project is really important to our community. Of course, I'd love to see it go the whole 11 miles, but getting it to Town Center from Newtown is a really big step in the right direction, and it virtually touches all of our city in terms of who will use it and the benefits it will bring to our community, both on an economic level and on activity level, on a socioeconomic level. There's so many pluses to doing this that, to me, pursuing this grant just seems like a slam dunk. So I'll pass these out, and I hope that anyone who wants to be a co-sponsor, please add your name, and hopefully we can make this a city council-sponsored item.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Ms. Wilkin.
Good afternoon, Ms. Lin. This is probably maybe the second time I've heard her presentation on the benefits of this project, and I fully support it and certainly do thank Councilmember Abbott for bringing forth the resolution. Happy to co-sponsor that resolution with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
Well, I think it's very important for the council to see how this project is designed, and I think, you know, we haven't had a presentation on that because of, of course, the full right-of-way is to be used as a transportation corridor, and this is to be just one component. This was to have been a pretty spectacular trail had we had the light rail, and we all know how that was going to be built, but we really haven't seen what's being proposed at this time. So I think it's important that the city council see the design and see how we're going to be accomplishing those difficult things of the flyovers and the bridges and so forth that are going to have to be done singularly. But I think it's also important for the council to get back to the discussion of just what we're going to do with the rest of that right-of-way, too, because I think, you know, when the referendum failed, we said, "Well, we planned for it to be a transportation corridor," and we haven't gotten back to talking about that. And so I don't want to lose that whole concept, because I think that's extremely important, and that we get back to that and look at the total thing. I think it's kind of a mistake to do things piecemeal if we don't know the total. So I would ask that we have a briefing on the design, how this is being designed, and how it will be able to fit with a transportation corridor of some type, and if we could begin, if we could get back to talking about what that might be, I think it would be very good. I also want to mention something else, and since I'm no longer going to be liaison to the Bikes and Trails Committee, but it's another great opportunity at this time, and that's with the rights-of-way that the wind energy companies will be creating. And right now, of course, this Wind Dominion Energy is locating their right-of-way, and their intent is, or their request, is to use a part of the Southeastern Expressway right-of-way for that, for their component. And they, of course, have two or three different, well, I think there's six total options, but I'm assuming the city is going to be making some comment about which one we think is the better or the best of the six. But there's the fact that whatever that right-of-way, when it's built, and this is imminent, this is a long time in the future, this is imminent for the Dominion Energy, is a great place for trails, that we can use that because it will be available for us to use as a trail. And so I think it's important that we tie in the trail aspect with that. And of course, the Kitty Hawk, which will come a little later, that also will be coming through the ITA, coming to Short Sandbridge and coming through the ITA to get to Fintridge, and I'm assuming, and that's supposed to be all underground as it's planned now, should also be a good opportunity for a trail. And I hope we're looking ahead and making sure that we're making those comments at this time to be able to take advantage of that opportunity. Thank you.
Very good points, Mrs. Henley. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. This is really something exciting to look forward to. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Mr. Taylor Adams, Deputy City Manager on CPACE Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is a, this is a briefing that was requested by a member of council, and we are coming to you seeking guidance on potential next steps. So we've got a, here we go. And so CPACE, which is the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, and so, oh, there we go. So just a few things we'll cover today. First, what is the program? How does it work? Who's eligible? And some potential roads forward should you choose to pursue the program? So what is it? It's a, I'm not going to read all this to you, but the long and short of it, this is to promote energy efficiency within the community. And so what this does is this is a funding tool that will allow power property owners to voluntarily finance energy efficiency and other series of costs to improve their business. It's 100% financing, and it looks a lot like a property tax, and that's important to note because it comes by way of a levy. The public benefit here is this is considered a long-term improvement to the community that is, often comes by way of improving energy efficiency and usage throughout the locality. How does it work? It's, there, we'll show you four options that would allow you the means forward in a moment, but the way that this generally works is that there is a, there would be an enabling legislation that was adopted by the locality that would create the program. Once that is, once that is done, typically you would see localities pursue a, what we call a program administrator here, that's often done by a third party, it can be done internally. But then what happens is that that program administrator would market the program to property owners that could benefit. Those property owners would then opt into the program, and then there would be, there would be a levy that was assessed and that was brought forward, and it would, and the, basically, you know, recording and assessment, basically, and enforcing of liens that follow through with this. One thing that says, we say that there's no cost to locality, it's important to note there's, there's, there's no cost, there's no match for the locality. Should you choose to pursue an in-house option, there would be administrative costs, but that, I should admit that that's rare. Who's eligible? Basically, CPACE is currently available to commercial properties within, within the district that you draw, and here's a list of eligible uses. As we work down, we can see that eligible uses extend to, to not-for-profits as well as, basically, not, I would say there's a list of, and they get to the et cetera, it's sort of any untaxed, non-governmental entity. It can also be used for upgrading existing buildings and for new construction. So this is where we get to the program options. If it was your choice to do this, and so, as we say, city council must, it's important to, I'm not saying you have to do this program, what we're saying is, if you choose to do this program, there is a, there's an enabling legislation that would follow, that would create the program, and we would need your guidance as to how we would do that if you think that these energy, these, this energy savings measure is important. And so the first of those would be to, that we would self-administer the program internally. The second would be that we would contract with a third-party administrator. That would require you, that would require use of a, of a public procurement process. We can opt into a state-sponsored program, and I'll quickly remember, this is something that you all have been briefed on before, and you'll remember that at that point, we said that we were waiting for the state to enact their own program to provide us guidance. We thought that that would happen last year. It did not, and so we are still hoping, so we're saying that we are hoping that the Commonwealth will complete, complete their program this year. We do not know that they will, we just assume that they will, but, but in the time that we've been waiting on the state, and this is what has brought this briefing forward, is that, that our colleagues in Fairfax and Loudoun County ran a procurement and have enacted a program with, with a third party, that, and Norfolk has now used a cooperative provision within that contract to set up their own program. And so one of the things that you could do pending the review of the City Attorney's Office to ensure that the cooperative language was robust and appropriate for us is we could adopt that program if you all felt that that was, that that was the road forward. With that, we're interested to know, is this a program that, that you all are interested in us pursuing? If it is, I would welcome any guidance on what next steps would look like by way of how to enact a program here.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Mr. Wood, and then Mr. Balucci.
So I, and I appreciate you giving us the, this document in advance, because I did go look at the state website on this, and I just had a couple of questions. So as I understand it, CPACE is, it's a lien on the assessment, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and upon the sale, it goes with the property, it's not something that has to be paid off?
I don't know the answer to that, Vice Mayor.
But that's what it looked like.
But yes, sir, that's, that's how, that's how I read it, but I don't, I don't want to speak specifically for, for how the attorneys would read, or how that would work as it relates to the assessment, but yes, sir, that is how I understand it.
But is it like an SSD in a micro sense, then?
That's how I think of it. I, I mean, as I was trying to wrap my head around what this would look like, that's the closest thing that I could come up with, yes.
So would the city collect the money from the property owner, or how would that work?
So two models in a self-administered program, yes, sir, it would, it would all be internal that we would have to deliver that, and that'd be, that'd be something to talk about, exactly where within our own organization to place that. We find that most other jurisdictions are utilizing a third-party, a third-party, almost a third-party administrator role to manage that for us, but, and then, and as we understand it, and it's important for me to note, we have not advanced this to an operational sense because we wanted to get your guidance first, but in conversation with, with other colleagues in jurisdictions that have done this, it appears that they, that the third party would handle most of the dialogue with, with the various taxing bodies.
So then if, if I had this done at my house, or somebody has it done at their house, then it, you know, say, say improvements of $10,000 or whatever, it's financed over a finite period of time, right?
Yes, sir.
And then who do I write the check to?
So I don't know the answer to that, is I, and that's just because we have not advanced this beyond getting guidance from you, but it would, it would most certainly, there have to be to, to the treasurer if it was an administered program or the third-party administrator.
Let me go in a different direction.
Yes, sir.
Who is financing this? The city is financing it through tax, through an increased assessment?
Yes, sir, the levy becomes the, the levy becomes the way that the, that the loan is repaid.
So then, so it's basically like an SSD, then?
Yes, sir.
So how does that work, then? When you talked about, and that was where it got me confused, when you talked about these non-governmental tax-exempt organizations, if they're not paying property tax, then how do you do it?
And I am assuming that there would have to be a levy assessed against the non-governmental entity to deliver that, but I'm happy to get that confirmed and come back to you.
And then you might not know this answer, maybe Mark does, but is this, is this a levy that, or is it a lien that is a governmental lien that puts it in advance of mortgages, or how does that work?
I would not want to speak to that, that would.
It is. It's just like a tax lien.
So it's essentially, it's, it's like an SSD, seems like.
There are a lot of similarities.
Okay, thank you.
And that's how I think of it, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Balucci.
Mr. Adams, I just want to thank you for that presentation and for all the work that you and your colleagues within the city have done to get us to this point, and I think it's important, just for anyone who's watching, that we just take a moment to talk about why we're here discussing this program and what some of the virtues of the program really could be. CPACE program, in my view, and in the analysis that I've done, really leads me to believe it's a win-win-win-win. The program itself is an opportunity, is voluntary. It's an opportunity for commercial, multifamily property owners to have access to private capital to make energy efficiency and resiliency improvements on their property, which promotes good stewardship of the environment and, and energy savings and efficiencies, and as well, these improvements promote economic development and economic activity. And so from all aspects, it's, it's a virtuous program, and, and I think it's one that we really need to, and I'm glad we're really seriously looking at how to adopt it in Virginia And so I think in particular in this environment where our economy is rebounding and stormwater is, and resiliency is always at top of mind, it's important to have every tool possible at our disposal to mitigate the impacts of our current flooding and to create resiliency improvements everywhere we can throughout the city. And this is a program that really provides that opportunity to commercial and nonprofit and multifamily businesses throughout the city. As well, we've missed, we've missed some opportunities in, in the last year when, when we've, and it's really, as you noted, it's not the fault of the city, it's a discussion about how to best implement the program, and we were waiting on the state to stand up their program, and for one reason or another, there's been delays, different series of delays. But I've been contacted by a number of, a number of folks who are interested and who would use the program in Virginia Beach. And so that's why I think it's, it's important for all the reasons mentioned that we, that we try to move forward as quickly as we can on this. My, so, so that's something I wanted to share about it. I guess my question would be Norfolk, could you explain a little bit more about how Norfolk, Norfolk implemented the program? You said it's through a cooperative?
Yes, sir, through a cooperative program. And, but if I may quickly, I see that Mr. Harmeyer is behind me, and that normally means I've said something incorrectly, that's why I'd rather get that cleaned up first.
Sure. So just for clarification, the recent General Assembly amended the CPACE legislation. Now you cannot do a CPACE on residential dwelling with fewer than five units or residential condominium. So to the extent that you have that sort of contract in your mind, that it's a single-family house, that's been taken off the table by legislation this year.
Thank you, Mr. Harmeyer. And for the record, I never had an anticipation that it would be applicable to single-family and to residential. This is for commercial, all the uses that were listed on the previous slide, but thank you for that clarification.
And so now to your question specifically, and Dana, as always, thank you. So to the question of how it was procured, so the contract, the contract that was solicited by Loudoun County initially had a provision in it that was called a cooperative purchasing clause, and so part of that solicitation provided a framework by which other public entities in, in the Commonwealth or in, I guess jurisdictions whose laws align with the Commonwealth could, could adopt that contract and basically issue their own contract utilizing the provisions and terms that are within that scope of work. That is something that we actually, it's important to note, that is something that we have done here, serving as a lead agency many times, and we see that frequently in public safety in particular, but also our fleet, fleet contracts have, have long been adopted by other jurisdictions to, just because we have, we have a great contract set that has real value in the, you know, in other jurisdictions. So Loudoun did that exactly. They, they allowed a framework by which other jurisdictions can adopt the scope of work within their contract and bring it to the local level. I cannot tell you whether their, whether their contract specifically fits for us, however, as it's now been adopted by, we know at least two other entities in the Commonwealth that goes to reason that it would be. That said, I would not want to get ahead of the review of our own, of our own City Attorney's Office.
Well, thank you. And just to, in conclusion, I, I think it's important, and I hope this body will consider seizing this opportunity now. We've waited for and experienced a variety of delays, and I think we're, as I mentioned, we're missing opportunities and, and that we should be seizing upon for economic impact, for environmental impact, and for the good of our community. As I mentioned before, it's, it's a win-win-win-win. And this program, I just want to be clear, shouldn't be really any cost to the taxpayer or very little. The program administration costs are built into the third-party administrator, correct?
As I understand it, yes, sir.
So just, so my understanding is that there will be no impact to the Virginia Beach taxpayer. It's, it's not a, you know, the type of government efficiencies stimulus that we see in some other localities. This is voluntary, it's private capital, and there's no cost to the taxpayer, there's only improvement to the taxpayer and to our community, as I understand it.
Yes, sir, and so I would just offer, if, if it is the will of the body that we move forward with this, I think we would owe you a bit more work. I don't want to speak for the Finance Department, as they are not here today, but, but one of the big, one of the big operational savings in using a cooperative contract is that it, that it eliminates six to nine months from the service, or from the, six to nine months from our, in solicitation time given for, for a, for a solicitation of this size. Also, we would owe you, as it relates to whether we thought it was best to move forward with a third-party administrator or an in-house, in-house administration, we would, I would have to yield to those other departments to sort of put together a plan to tell you, I am assuming that we would want to utilize a third-party administrator, but I, but that is an assumption, and I don't want to speculate on that definitively.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Henley.
Well, where are some localities that have been using this that we can look at to see their experience? I mean, apparently it's not in Virginia, it must be other places.
Yes, ma'am. So...
So, as I understand it, this is a relatively new offering to the marketplace. I first learned of this from Tom Nicholas in our own Public Works Group when this was first brought to him, and that's going to be, give or take, two years, about three years ago, because it was before I was in development, I was still in procurement. So, give or take three years ago, there was no one using it in the Commonwealth at that time that he had identified, and it was new. Since then, we've seen the three, the other three organizations advance their plan. That is all that we know of. I would be happy to do research to find out if there are additional offerings in other states.
Well, if it's such a good thing, there should be places that we can look at and see how they're doing it. Because I have to say, the last presentation I saw about this was not real favorable.
Yes.
So I'm assuming there's something else going on out there that those folks missed.
I'm happy to do that research.
Anybody else?
You know, I think at this point, Taylor, let's go ahead and at least move forward and gather some more information and some of the other implications from the Finance Department, and certainly look at, you know, the different paths we can take in terms of, but I think, you know, I think it's, anybody object to it, at least going forward and gathering more data for a more in-depth and a path to success. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeHany.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, Ron Williams will come and kick off the Stormwater Bond Referendum Flood Protection Program presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up to your retreat earlier this year, where you had significant presentation and discussion about the potential for a stormwater bond referendum. We have a collective team that's been working over the past couple of months, first to look at this and respond to your questions that you had during the retreat, and different alternatives or options that you wanted us to consider. What you'll see today is that we've, looking at this in a more comprehensive manner, addressing some of your questions about the potential future, that we have the ability to create a flood protection program that is sustainable, that is comprehensive, and that will last several generations. You have options for financing, and a bond referendum is one of those that can be in the mix, and that we've started initial research for consumer input on what a communications plan would need to support an education platform if we're moving forward with a bond referendum. So today, we'll have LJ Hanson from Public Works giving an overview of the flood protection program and its different components. Kevin Chaddley are revisiting some of what was discussed at the retreat, but with new information and some alternative approaches. Dana Harmeyer giving us input on bond referendum. Several of you suggested that the previous referendums that we had had in '86 and '87 were good models, and we'll revisit those and why perhaps the questions that were there were good models. And then Valerie Myers will give us some glimpse of what we've been working on with preliminary research, but then also what a communications plan would be, and then we'll wrap up with questions and seek some direction after that.
Okay, thanks a bunch, Ron. I appreciate it. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's my pleasure to talk to you today about our program. I know that this body has had a lot of information regarding stormwater, flooding, and a number of other elements presented to you. During my tenure with the city, one of the things that we've really tried to do is to come up with a comprehensive plan. So, all of the elements that we have in Public Works and throughout the city, try to understand how they all work together. And it is a bit of a beast, because we have so many different things that we do. And so, as we talk about the flood protection program, one of the things I want to talk about is that while there's a number of elements, we're going to try and break them into two major elements that we want to talk about today. And the first one would be operations and enhanced maintenance, and the second one being looking at projects and flood protection projects moving forward. As we think about operations and enhanced maintenance, please think of that as maintaining the stuff that we already have, the infrastructure that's already in place, the stuff that was built, the stuff that we will build, and making sure that we have the resources and the maintenance and the tools necessary to make sure that not only are we maintaining what we have, catching up on some past due maintenance, but making sure that we're able to take care of that which we build in the future, and being good stewards of the money that we spend. A lot of those things are the things that we would think of, cleaning out ditches, maintaining pipes, but there's also going to be an element of CIP that's tied to operations and maintenance. Imagine pump stations that we have that will need to be retrofit at some point, or infrastructure that's in the ground that fails, that's of a large scale. So there's still an element of capital improvement project, large-scale improvements, but by and large, what we're talking about is the maintenance and the operations. I also don't want to shortchange that work that we do in the coastal shoreline protection replenishment and the regulatory programs. That also folds into what it is that we're doing in the operations and maintenance. As we think about operations and maintenance, what we'd like to propose is that in our vision, that this element of the program will be, continue to be funded predominantly through the stormwater ERU and the two-and-a-half-cent real estate dedication. And that's important, because what we really want to do is make sure that we've set up a good system, that we can take care of what it is that we have, that we have the funding that's in place to be able to maintain that going into the future. And just for your information, there's a little bit of information for the stormwater fund in fiscal year '22, about 50.8 million annually, and that includes about 18.5 million in CIP and Pago. The other thing that's important to note is that we have had two three-and-a-half-cent increases that have not been enacted, and so we've delayed those at least twice. And we believe that if we dedicate the ERU, the stormwater utility, to solely the operations and enhanced maintenance, the programs that I've defined, including the CIP that's tied to that, that we would be able to negate any additional three-and-a-half-cent increases and work from the existing stormwater structure that we have in place. Again, that would allow us to do some improvements. This is not the, this is not new capacity, this is taking care of what we already have, taking care of what we will build going into the future. This slide was presented to you by Phil Cutter during the CIP part of the budget presentation. And if you recall, Mr. Cutter said that there were a number of areas that we have, that we're, that were a little bit delayed on maintenance. Sometimes it takes us a long time, if you look at even the first line, clearing ditches and other primary system improvements. It takes us about 12 years to do that. Mr. Cutter talked about the opportunities that if we had additional funding, we would be able to shorten that down to about eight years. And the canal program, 95 years to 25 years, et cetera. It's all in this chart, and you've seen it before. That would take about another $18.6 million is what was projected at that time. We don't think that we have enough funding out of the existing ERU to encapsulate this whole $18.6 million, but we do believe that we have enough that we could make a significant dent in this work. And that's important, because it allows us to not only do what we're supposed to be doing, but it allows us to improve what we have been doing and make sure that we can sustain that. The second part of the program is now looking ahead, looking into the future, and trying to identify, what does that future capacity look like? This is the bond referendum. This is what we're talking about as we think about the future, and how do we deal with that? And even in that part, if you think we have the recurrent flooding, management, recurrent flooding projects, and then sea level-wise, which is that big monster that's out there. I know that was a question from council. How do we, how do we deal with this big beast that's out there with a billion after it? We know that that's out there, but we don't believe that we can just try to compartmentalize everything. What we're looking at through the referendum process is the ability to start funding these projects. And if you notice, it's kind of a silly little thing, but there's a little arrow here in the middle, and you've kind of got this green on one side, green on one side and blue on the other. It's kind of a transition. We'll be starting off looking at recurrent flooding projects, slowly moving into the sea-level-wise strategies. And all of this is still supported by the technical reports that you've seen so many times. But what we're really trying to do is identify that process by which, again, we take care of what we have, we identify a new funding source, whether it be through the bond referendum, and Kevin's going to talk about funding a whole lot more than I am, but then identify that as a separate funding source moving forward, looking at these big, high-dollar projects that we have that are out there that are facing us. This slide shows a little bit of the Phase One projects, and these, again, this is not a slide that you haven't seen before. It identifies some of the projects that were identified in the, I think they were called Tier One at one point. We're calling it Phase One now, but you can call it either one. Those are projects that were previously defined, previously addressed to City Council. They're pretty well clear-cut. We know what needs to be done, we've got the data to support them, the designs are not done, but at least we have an element, we know what we're looking at, we have some pretty good estimates as far as how much the projects are going to cost. Behind those projects, you see that we kind of have these pixelated colors. We know that there are problems there, we know that there are issues there, but those are, those are projects that are not yet clearly defined. But what I really would like for you to be able to take away from this slide is that this is a citywide problem. This is not a problem that's located in any one area. If we look at the Phase One projects, we might be able to identify groupings, but as a whole, if we look at the pixelated stuff, this is spread out. This is not just one area of the city. I've got a couple of animations here that were presented by Tony Underbach to kind of illustrate how all of these projects work together, and this is from the Windsor Woods area, Thalia project. As the projects go together, we start to see change. It's not a matter of sometimes just one project, it's a multiple, it's a multiple project stacking on top of each other. But you can see from the slides and from the animations that we make real change, and these are, these are real people's homes, these are people's neighborhoods that are going to be impacted through these projects as we look to capacity in the future. But again, if you look at the slide, you can see that there's a number of projects that are included in here, and they all have to kind of work together. It's part of the overhaul, overall comprehensive project that we're talking about. So, as we, one of the things that we asked staff to do was to put together a schedule of projects, and I recognize the font here is way too small. It's not about the projects themselves, but one of the things that I thought you might appreciate is to try to develop a spend plan. One of the things that we wanted to do were look at the different phases of the projects that were identified in the original Tier One or Phase One projects. The blue being design, orange and gray being acquisition and utilities, and then yellow being construction. Again, slide's too small to make anything out individually, but when we put them all together, this tells us about our spending plan. This is what we, this is what we're anticipating over the first seven years. Kevin, again, is going to talk a little bit more about this at the conclusion of my remarks, but one of the things that you see is that it's not a level spending plan. This is a plan that really lends itself to having the latitude of having that bond capacity that allows us to be able to work from and not have to be in a competition with other programs, projects, other CIP-related priorities of the city, that we're not trying to be in that competition mode. Because this is such an important element to City Council, and because we don't know what, three years from now, we don't know what the economic conditions look like three years from now, four years, or five years, 10 years, or 20 years. What we're looking for and what we're proposing is to identify that type of a structure that allows us to be able to carry forward and to be able to work within the bond structure that's established. That's what we're here today to talk about. And lastly, I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we see the funding for this. We're expecting or anticipating, I guess, that we're predominantly funding this element, the new capacity, through bonds and Pago, with, again, no impact to the stormwater utility, no ERU increase. The bond referendum would allow for multi-generational program management and project development. And again, because that capacity is in there, it's designated for this purpose, we're not in competition with fire stations, schools, other types of things, because that capacity is designated for that purpose. And then, of course, one of the things that I hope that we recognize is that the sea-level rise projects are incorporated into subsequent phases. We're not going to start off with sea-level rise projects, not necessarily, but some of these projects, many of these projects, have an element of sea-level rise built into them. The further we progress through the program, the more that element will become more and more prominent. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin, so he can talk a little bit about the financing part of it.
Welcome, Kevin. Thank you. And we'll take questions and comments after all the speakers get a chance, but, you know, so far, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So, the Public Works Director had just outlined this concept of thinking of a flood mitigation program in two components, operation and maintenance, and then the flood control CIP projects. So this portion of the presentation, I'm going to talk, do a little bit of background on the existing program that we have in place and the financial support of that program, and then ultimately, some financing options of a potential bond referendum. So a little bit of background, the stormwater fund is real, or stormwater operations are really financed by primarily two funding streams. So there's the operations within the Enterprise Fund backed by the ERU. You can see here that includes 99 FTEs and other operations and maintenance needs, but primarily, the takeaway from that is that the ERU is the primary backer of the stormwater CIP section, so CIP Pago, as well as the payer for the debt service related to the issuance of stormwater revenue bonds. The other component supporting stormwater operations is within the General Fund, and that was, is supported through a two-and-a-half-cent real estate dedication. You can see here that majority of the stormwater FTEs are supported with this dedication within the General Fund. There's several programs and services and operations that's covered within that. So, that dedication was established by City Council as part of a financing strategy, stormwater financial strategy implemented with the FY 1920 operating budget. So with the budget and approved plan to increase the stormwater ERU rate by three-and-a-half cents for a six-year period, as well as putting the two-and-a-half-cent real estate dedication in place. The real purpose of, or goal of that financial strategy was to create capacity within the Enterprise Fund to maximize the ERU for the future issuance of bonds related to the flood mitigation projects. So really, that capacity is what was going to be supported. And whenever the dedication was put in place, we were able to move $14 million of the operations from the Enterprise Fund to the General Fund, creating a lot of that capacity. Since then, we've run into several challenges, primarily the COVID-19 pandemic. The decision was made to delay the implementation's plan and the planned ERU increase for two years now, out of a desire not to negatively impact families and residents, or businesses within the city during these difficult financial times. So with the plan that Public Works Director just outlined, it's given us a good opportunity to go back and revisit that strategy and look at the overall health of the stormwater Enterprise Fund. So, as the Director was talking about in Public Works, whenever you're thinking about operation and maintenance, especially pertaining to the CIP, you're really thinking about typically those type projects that would be more cash-funded or not necessarily bondable-type projects. Some of them are, however, primarily you'd utilize more like Pago, fund balance as a means of financing for those. So in looking at operations in one side of the house, really frees up and creates the capacity to look at flood mitigation projects specifically in another, on another side of the house, and allows the framing of the conversation about those projects and how they relate to the potential of a stormwater bond referendum. So this slide provides a high-level summary of the Enterprise Fund. There's a lot going on in this slide. Kind of working left to right, you can see it's over several years, FY '22, '23, '24, '25, and then starts jumping in five-year increments, so this really goes all the way out to FY '35. Couple of assumptions in here that the body should be familiar with is that this does not assume any programmed rate increases of the previously approved three-and-a-half-cent ERU increase for six years. Instead, this assumes no growth in the ERU rate itself, but there's slight growth in the number of ERUs coming on each year, so there's a little bit of growth in that. The other thing that this does is this removes all future issuance- The other thing that this does is this removes all future issuances from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund that would have been related to bond issuing, or, excuse me, removes all debt service that would have been related to flood mitigation or flood project issuances, and so it takes that burden off of the ERU, and as you can see, creates a lot of capacity. Just kind of working down the table, the top row is being the operating expenditures, second row, the operational revenues, and again, does not assume a rate increase. The third row is the difference, so that's simply the revenues minus expenditures, and the thing that we really are mindful of is that cumulative fund balance, and then the line below that, the percentage. So what that is representing is the percentage of fund balance that the fund is retaining each year as a percentage of the revenues, and per discussion with finance, they typically like to see that about 25%. So you can see in the short term, the fund's really healthy and has a lot of capacity if it's not being burdened by the additional debt service from those flood mitigation project issuances. In the last row there, that's just what the Stormwater Maintenance and Water Quality CIP would look like to be supported by the ERU. You can see that right here in this, it's programmed about $24, $23 million for most of this period. So as AJ was just saying, there's some capacity for that enhanced maintenance, however, what this does not take into account is that full $18.6 million that Public Works just outlined in their presentation. That capacity, really, the more we learn about the eligible uses of the American Rescue Plan Act, maintenance-related projects such as canal maintenance, ditch maintenance, and lake dredging are 100% allowable uses of that. So that, we haven't put a full plan together or talked about the full utilization of the federal stimulus coming down, but that is a possible consideration to help address some of the maintenance backlogs within the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and CIP section. If the desire was to not utilize that funds, but to do it through use of the ERU, then that negative 15% that you see out there, it would just slide further back, and a potential rate increase would be needed sooner rather than later to support additional enhanced So the takeaway from that is that the Enterprise Fund itself and operations is in a healthy position by design. The Flood Protection Program now, if everybody was able to do the real quick math from what LJ had in his presentation, that 10-year deliverable executable project list totaled $567 million. So City Council probably the last recalls of discussion being a $455 million bond referendum. So how you get to the $567 million is simply taking all those flood-related projects out of the, what was to be financed by the ERU, and now move it into the focus of the conversation of the referendum. So City Council last saw this chart at their retreat, and this is what they were seeing whenever they saw the $455 million bond referendum discussion and the options of what it would take to potentially finance that. So at that point in time, we were including a real estate dedication or rate adjustment to support not only the debt service, but then there was layered-up maintenance needs in addition to that totaling a potential eight cents under this scenario here. After conversations with the City Manager's Office and Public Works, the focus is really now to simplify this and have the conversation with the bond referendum to simply be, what is it going to take to pay for the, sustainably cover the debt service related with this potential bond referendum discussion? And again, we haven't put together a full plan, or decisions have not been made, but the utilization of the American Rescue Plan Act funding to help with those maintenance needs can really kind of take that burden off this table and streamline this for the conversation of not only council, but also in what's being discussed with the public. So some rate scenarios and looking at a possible $567 million bond referendum. So City Council's probably familiar with, we've been running two scenarios. So the rate needed to support $567 million on a 20-year bond issuance repayment plan is 4.3 cents, and if we were to do it on a 10-year term, it'd be 6.4 cents. So again, all these bonds would be fully issued and executed within a 10-year period. This is just simply the repayment cycle and the rate that would be needed to cover that. The information down below is more informational and not necessarily for a decision point, but just what City Council might want to take into consideration. So you can see the $567 million is executed in both of these scenarios by FY '30. And then this row called debt capacity wants fully issued. So this is something that I think Councilmember Moss was talking about and wanting to visually see, is that as you're paying off the debt or paying down the principal over time, that once, once that's retired, that comes into the charter bond calculation, and should City Council lockbox that for the purposes of Stormwater and that charter bond, or those GO bonds are dedicated for that purpose, then by FY '30, once this is fully executed and everything's issued, you've, again, accumulated in the 20-year scenario there, $125 million of GO bond capacity that could be issued at a future point in time for additional Stormwater needs. So this is really a, once it's in motion, the retirement of that creates this continuous bill payer and authorization of a means of financing going forward. That's obviously contingent on having adequate revenue in the dedicated stream to cover that in future issuances and also being mindful of the debt metrics. So as you can see over in the 10-year scenario, because you're repaying it on a much more accelerated plan, by FY '30, you have $251 million of borrowing capacity to put back into the program. However, beginning FY '28, you slightly exceed the 10% of debt service to general government expenditures, tripping the debt metric. It actually becomes 10% at that point in time, and then slowly goes back down. So those are just things to be mindful of. Also, City Council at the retreat had asked that we do a quick benchmark to see where our existing metrics are compared with other localities. So our most restrictive debt metric is debt service to general government expenditures, and that's a 10%. This is also the most important according to Prager Financial Advisor as to what the rating agencies look like, and as you can see from this table, we're really in line with the rest of Hampton Roads, and especially AAA bond-rated localities. At one of the last City Council discussions, whenever the referendum was mentioned, the discussion was had to see all financing and potential funding scenarios. So in addition to the possibility of a bond referendum through the use of GO or charter bonds, is also the possibility of utilization of public facility revenue bonds. Public facility revenue bonds do not have the same restrictions in place like general GO bonds or charter bonds do, which are governed by the city's charter. Public facility revenue bonds don't have those. They do count against the city's debt metrics, so we would need to be mindful of that, and we would also likely need a revenue source in place to cover the debt service associated with $567 million. However, that is one funding alternative that would, City Council could consider. Now, with public facility revenue bonds, they're not backed entirely by the full faith and credit of the city like charter bonds and GO bonds are. So as a result, the bond market sees them as a little bit riskier, and they sell at a little bit higher interest rate, and I think that's about 15 basis points is what finance was telling me is the difference between public facility revenue bonds and GO bonds the last time I checked. So that equates to about $450,000 a year over the 20-year period. Some other funding supplements for consideration, obviously, I'd mentioned the American Rescue Plan Act, maintenance projects related to the overall program are prime candidate for that. The Commonwealth of Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund, currently right now, there's about $18 million available for localities. We're still learning about that, and we'll be looking to pursue that potentially. There's a study going on at the federal level right now for coastal storm risk management. We don't have any indication that additional funding's going to be available for that yet. That's still several steps away, but it's something we're continuing to track and monitor. And then, obviously, we've all been hearing about the infrastructure bill. Don't know of anything that's in there at this point in time that would directly be attributable to this, however, we're mindful of that and going to be continuing to watch for that. So with that, I will turn it over to Dana.
Thank you very much. This is a great presentation by all.
Good afternoon, City Council. So just a few logistical things. As a person that would be writing the resolutions, we're going to look for some direction. You, as a body, can request a referendum by simple majority vote. In this case, there is the added complexity that if the answer to that is yes, then you have to come back and do a bond authorization, which requires eight votes, so you want to keep that in mind. There is a statutory deadline, 81 days before the election, so you're looking at August 13, which is a Friday, and then presumably, if you have the referendum in hand, you would also do things to set up the program, so direct the city manager to adjust tax rates if tax rates are needed. Those sorts of things are to be anticipated in this process. We went back to the 80s and wanted to see how we did it, and so in the 80s, what they, the procedure was, was first council sort of gave buy-in to staff to put forward the public notices required for the debt authorizations. So they did the two notices required, they did the public hearing, and then they did the authorization of the bonds subject to the approval in the election by the voters. So in essence, all of council's approvals were front-end as far as authorizing the bonds. There was a November referendum, and then when it was a positive, then afterward, they would do the tax rate adjustments and whatnot. The other sort of approach, if you want to do it, is, is just request the referendum upfront, then you have the referendum, and once you receive the response, then you could go forward with the formalities of authorizing the debt. There's no perfect way, then there's pros and cons to each, but we would sort of require direction before we start placing public notices for authorizing $567 million of debt. So that's sort of question number one that would help us in sort of moving forward. Question number two is the actual wording of the question. And so back in the 80s, and we've just got an indicative sample of 1986 Street and Highways, the question in essence laid out the projects, the projects totaled the amount you're asking to be authorized, and that was basically the way you went forward. There are some challenges with $567 million in getting granularity, but, but to the extent that that's the model you would like to use, this is sort of what that question looks like, and maybe it's a little more wieldy with $40 million versus $567 million. So you may want to keep that in mind, but you do have control over the question. Note two other referendums that were positive using this model back in the 1980s. Alternatively, you can do a very broadly worded question, which more or less says we want $567 million. We intend to do it on Stormwater needs, recurrent flooding, flood mitigation measures. This would provide more flexibility, both in fashioning the projects and also if technology changes, if, say, a project costs half of what you think it costs, you are able to use that debt capacity for other things, as long as it's within the sort of off-ramps that you've set up in, in the question. So you control the question, but the way you ask the question is going to control how you actually spend the money on the back end. Third is to take somewhat of a hybrid approach between the first two, and that would include a demonstrative list of products, projects, but it's not necessarily limited to the projects as long as you're doing Stormwater needs, recurrent flooding, and flood mitigation So I'll give it back to the communication plan, but, but we do need sort of some guidance on, on, on the two questions. So one is really about the public notices, and then the second is framing the question as we get working on the documents you will approve.
Okay, thank you, Dana. Good stuff.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. As mentioned, I'm going to just give you a brief overview of the communications plan piece of the Flood Protection Program. And as you would start with any communications plan, we're going to begin with our research. There's a couple of things that we plan to do currently that I'll mention in a few seconds, but just to give you an idea of the type of research that we have now, the data that we have now, you can see from the screen grab we have here that during the, this is data collected during the most recent citizen satisfaction survey, which was taken in 2019, we saw that satisfaction with the city's efforts to address recurrent flooding and the effects of sea-level rise were at 58%, and that's significant because it was actually an 11% increase from the previous citizen satisfaction survey from 2017. And also, we found in that survey that more than 7 in 10 residents, at 72%, would be in favor of having a referendum question included on the next year's election ballot that would assess the support for an additional tax or fees to speed up projects that address neighborhood flooding problems. So that's the data, like I said, that we already have from that most recent survey. What we have in the works, or we plan to do currently, is to do a convenience survey online through the city's publicinput.com platform, and I believe that survey was actually provided to you all via email last week by the city manager for your review. And we typically have a very robust response to our online services, surveys between 2,000 to 5,000 respondents for most of our surveys. And in addition to that, we're going to have a scientific survey conducted via phone through a third-party firm, and we should have results from both those surveys. If we deploy them soon, we'll have the results by July. So in continuing the research for the communication plan, just to give you an idea of the kind of questions we were asking on the surveys, we're going to gauge voters' knowledge of flooding issues and their knowledge of the city's current initiatives surrounding recurring flooding, and their attitudes and beliefs about the current projects and those that we're proposing, and then also their ideas about how, how they feel about funding flood protection projects, and where and how they've been getting that information, and also what specific aspects of the projects do they feel should be prioritized. So then the last piece here would just be our, how we include our means to what we'll use to educate and inform the citizens about the Flood Protection Program and the projects included in it. As you see, the first column would be our owned media, which would be the city website, co-branded report, video news and feature stories, and different forms of community outreach. The second arm here would be earned media, which would be through briefings with members of local media, by-lined articles and op-eds, which would include interviews with city personnel involved with the projects and any community outreach events. And lastly, we have shared media, and this would be what we would do along our social media channels. The city has very robust social channels, including Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor, and here's where we use more interactive content to engage people and to inform them of the projects as we're moving through, and we push out information on the Flood Protection Program in the form of these, such infographics, quizzes, storytelling, using video content, means that are more consumable through social media. So that's a brief interview of the communications plan for this.
Okay, thank you.
I will turn it over to Ron.
Hey, appreciate everybody. So Ron, we ready for questions?
Yes, sir, please.
Anybody? Mrs. Henley.
Well, John's not here. We really miss him.
Oh, and if I can say, Mr. Moss is away on family business, but this is a subject certainly germane to something that he's been talking to for a while, so we do appreciate that, and I'm sure he'll, he'll be catching up on this presentation. Mrs. Henley.
I'm sure he will, but we really need his input. Going back to the, the first part of the presentation, because I think the, the maintenance is so critical of, of what we have, you know, keeping our current stuff working, and that's where we get the complaints with, with people, you know, their ditch is not clean, the canal's not open, and all this stuff. And how we're going to continue to fund that, I think I got lost a little bit in some of these money transfers and so forth, but looking at Slide Seven with, I guess, the way we had looked at it with these current cycles and we trying to get to the desired cycles, but it's that third column that just says that we need a total of $18.6 million more per year in order to achieve that, but I think as But I think as going through everything, somewhere along the line was the message that I got, at least, that we can get there without more increases to the enterprise fund, so we don't have to do those annual reasons. But I'm not sure how we get there, if we're going to be getting $18.6 million more per year to do the maintenance without any rate increases. And as far as using the rescue plan money, that's kind of one-time money. So if we've got to do this maintenance every year, we can't really use one-time money unless we're just trying to do the initial part to get there. But I guess that has a couple of years before we have to spend it, so maybe we can do that. So I'm not sure, I lost it in there, how we're going to be able to achieve these enhanced maintenance, desired maintenance cycles without continuing to increase the ERU rates.
So a couple of things, Ms. Henley. Number one is, you know, I think LJ was trying to reflect a snapshot of discussion that you previously had. This was what Phil Cutter shared with you during CIP season. Where we first have to step back and look at what the philosophical change that we're suggesting, and that is that take the capital projects that have previously been in the CIP and that we're proposing for bond issuances out of the ERU support, and let the enterprise fund continue to be, or grow to be operations and maintenance only. Now, the reason that we had the dedicated increases that are built into the current ordinances is because we had that heavy load of capital, you know, 100-some million in there that we were trying to support. What we would need to do is make, look at these cycles that would, one, take into context of the additional staff and funding that you just put in this budget, and then, two, project out when we would need increases. We're not suggesting that you wouldn't ever need an increase, it just would be a little more of a regular cycle type of increase as costs grow, as operations grow. And so we would need to bring back a more refined answer to that about whether or not is this 18 million really the number, but an understanding would be that what we're suggesting is going forward, we believe that the enterprise fund should support operations and maintenance, and we not co-mingle both operations, maintenance, and capital with the real estate taxes or bond issuances and the enterprise fund supported by ERU, plus that one dedication.
Okay, thank you. I get it a little bit better now. But I really think the maintenance is critical, because that's what, that's what people are seeing now. So if we're going to start talking about these new CIP projects being done, and we have to explain all of that to the public, but they're still looking at their ditch or whatever that they don't feel is operating now, that's going to be their chief concern. So I think we have to be able to answer this maintenance question
I agree.
before we can get to needing $500 million more to build new stuff.
Right.
But there's another aspect of, and I just have to say that our staff has been extremely good in finding these other pots of money. And I look at Tony and Phil back there, and I know they're on top of it, and they're, you know, they know where these other pots of money are, and they're very good at it, and that will certainly help a lot. But there's another way that we're going to be achieving a lot of, in stormwater, and that's with our road projects. Road projects, when we do a road project now, you know, it includes everything, and the stormwater, the drainage part is a very critical part of all of our road projects. But I know, and I'm sure, that the proposed road projects in the Princess Anne District are going to come in on time as they're now scheduled. But later this year, we're going to get underway for West Neck Road, and we're going to get underway for Sand Bridge Road, Nemo 7A. And then next year, I guess it's the Elbow Road Project, and then after that, the Indian River Road Projects, both of which are tremendous, and I guess are already approved in the smart scale. So they're all coming online in the next two or three years, and those are going to have a lot of, I feel sure, stormwater components to getting those road projects done. And I think it's important that we include all of that work in our message to people, because that, those road projects are funded, and the design is underway and all that stuff. And so I hope we won't lose that opportunity to let people know what's going to get done. And those are just the Princess Anne District. You all can figure out what's in the rest of the districts. I'm sure there are other good road projects, too, but don't forget that there's a lot there, and we want to make sure we're telling the whole story. So.
Agree. And Tony and Phil would point out, of course, that in the, you know, previous Tier One, Phase One, that we're calling it now, that there are some road projects that incorporate, you know, not only recurrent flooding, but also getting into that sea-level-wise type of strategy. With the other road projects, I think its goal is similar to what we were discussing last week with stormwater regulations, and that is make sure that the road is in the same situation that a commercial or residential development would be, and that is do no harm. So it, yes, it is being accommodated within the road project.
Well, I think, I hope I'm looking wrong, because I don't have my CIP with me, but I think it looks to me like the Punga Ferry Road improvements, which are now in the CIP, kind of shows construction a little later if it goes to the road bond referendum. I'm sure that can't be right. So we'll have to check that out, because, you know, we do have potential, a couple of road projects from the Princess Anne District in the bond referendum, and we'll have to make sure that they, they're improved and not dropped back. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Wooten?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm wondering what has been done to provide the public with information on where are the funds that we've used in the past, where they have gone? In my communication with residents, it's certainly happy to support a bond referendum, but they want to know where the previous money went. And I've certainly asked in staff retreats and, you know, in other settings, could we have some type of mechanism that will show the public where the money went? How they can track the money that they've already invested into projects of this nature? It will certainly be beneficial in working towards a bond referendum, but I think it's very important as the city, city leadership, that we show accountability of the funds that we've already used.
Yes, ma'am. Kevin can certainly, and Public Works can certainly help with that. There's also a point in time that, you know, there's certain milestones that we should recognize in that, you know, post the Matthew Storm, you had a significant increase from city council in, you know, two different budget cycles of where we've grown, you know, the stormwater and flood control section of the CIP to now, you know, the largest section of the CIP. So there has been a significant ramp up, and a lot of that's been going into design and planning. So, but we can certainly bring that back as information to understand where were we traditionally, some of the projects that were completed, you know, what was their impact, and then how you significantly ramped up the funding in the CIP for this, to support this. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. In your anticipation of the cost of the projects, I'm assuming that you've taken into consideration inflation?
Yes. That's been accommodated for, Kevin, right?
The $567 does have.
The $567 does accommodate that. Now, the one, the one thing, Mr. Jones, that is different than we've been giving you a look at over the past couple of years, is this is an extremely accelerated schedule from what we've been talking about before. I know when Ms. Abbott, Mr. Belucci, Ms. Wooten first came on council, you know, we've been talking about a 15-year schedule, and now what, you know, what LJ and Kevin showed you is really condensing that down into, you know, six to 10 years to accomplish some of these, once the funding's in place, and so.
It may be condensed some, but the bottom line is you're going to have some.
And they certainly have their conservative metrics that are, we build into that. Yes, sir.
And as far as the revenue to cover that, how, what, has your anticipated revenue from the bond, from the proceeds of the bond, been anticipated to cover that?
Yes, sir. So as Kevin, or as I showed the slide, that funding schedule that where it was staggered and it was, it was not uniform across, we took the sum total of that five, that seven-year period to come up to be, that's where we came up with the $567 million. And so that is that, that's that number that we're projecting. When we're, when we're doing cost projections, there's a number of ways to account for inflation. If you have a good, hard, fixed estimate, you can, you can account for inflation that way, looking at a 3% growth factor, a 4% growth factor. Oftentimes, where we are in the planning stages of development, we're just putting a very hefty contingency in there because we know that there's a number of things that we don't know. We don't know about what inflation's going to look like, we don't know all the elements of right-of-way, we don't know all the elements of utilities that we're going to encounter. So we have a very strong contingency. So if you were to actually look at our numbers, you're not going to find a 20-year projection for inflation, but rather what you're going to find is a, is a very healthy contingency to account for inflation, utilities, and those types of things, where we are at this point. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Members of council, if it's okay, I recommend that we move forward with the draft thing, you know, of a resolution ordinance or whatever it takes to, you know, put it on the referendum. And then my other suggestion is, I think the shorter version of the referendum, because I think a lot of these questions, if they get too long, they get too muddled, because there may be other items on the ballot. And I think that we could do a good job in explaining it at, you know, during the part of the communication and education process. So that would be my advice in council, that, you know, granted, it would be a six-vote thing, but hopefully, I think, as we strive for consensus on this. And, you know, let me just say this, what I think this also does is send a powerful message to people that are out there that are concerned about recurrent flooding, you know, especially, you know, since we're in the threshold of some significant economic development. And I can tell you that our partners with the Navy and Department of Defense also have an avid interest in this. So Ron, would you agree that it might be in everybody's best interest if we do go forward with this, to show that the city of Virginia Beach is truly engaged in this, and we are in the process of remedy, not just talking about it?
Oh, yes, sir. And some of the context of what we've tried to share with you today is that, and perhaps that marries up with what you're recommending, Mayor, is that you have the ability to build a sustainable, long-term generational program, and not just a one-and-done of a list of projects. You can establish the funding capacity that will carry into several generations to deal with your immediate needs and your future needs, and that's what LJ and Kevin tried to lay out for you.
And the priorities would certainly be changing over the years as they go forward, but this way you have an all-encompassing plan that could accommodate anything that, you know, may even come up. And, you know, so if it's okay, Mrs. Henley?
Yeah, almost. All right, if we're going to move ahead with this concept of the 500 and some odd million-dollar referendum, that is anticipating we're not using any of the American Rescue Plan money for any of this, and what are we doing with that 130 million? I thought that was supposed to help us buy down some of this.
So.
Okay.
Ms. Henley, so as part of the financing plan that I was talking about, we certainly have not put together a full proposal, but our understanding of the allowable uses of that is that maintenance-related projects, stormwater maintenance-related projects, such as the ones I listed, the canal maintenance, ditch maintenance, dredging, those are 100% allowable uses. The flood.
Those are ongoing, those aren't one-time.
They are, but this funding can be used as an infusion of like Pago into the CIP to, and it can be used over multiple-year period. So it could be used over multiple years to enhance, I'm just using an example, of $20 million a year of CIP stormwater maintenance needs over the next four years. It can be spread out depending on what Public Works is able to spend and execute within a given year. So that, that's, it could 100% go towards the maintenance. To utilize it for the purposes of the flood control, there's a different, not all of the flood control projects, to our understanding, are going to be eligible. It would take a requirement to dissect each one of them and look for components and costs related to each one, related to stormwater runoff and those costs. So it would, this isn't a good utilization or to simply supplant that and say, okay.
Yeah, so Councilmember Henley, basically what Kevin's trying to say is that we haven't completed our research yet, but it's looking like the best possible bang for the buck if council is to authorize use of the American Rescue Plan funds for stormwater, is to use it on the maintenance side. And it does not necessarily have to be for two-year, we can plus up and then carry it for a significant period of time, which will allow us to hold the ERU rate flat and take some of that debt capacity out, and then that's what the plus-up is with the, with the bond referendum, should council go down that path. And one of the benefits that we kicked around when we brought this proposal to the council was the ability to go to the citizens and say, we can hold the ERU flat over a period of time, and reduce the number that we're actually asking for the bond referendum by using some of these mechanisms. Before, we were coming to council as a possible asking the citizens for eight cents to 10 cents, and bringing it down to 4.3 and holding the ERU flat may be a better thing to sell to the community and still be able to address some of the stormwater maintenance deficiencies that you pointed out, using the American Rescue Plan and pulling the debt capacity out of the ERU. So we're hoping this will be a better package once we solidify the communications, to bring back to council, and also to get out in front of the community as a way that we can do this.
But I, somewhere, did I hear that the American Rescue Plan thing, we're going to come up with that proposal in like August? If we're going to do this, we've got to, we already know, is that kind of what we're saying?
So we do plan to bring.
Can I make that up?
We do plan to bring the full plan to you in August. You know, we can handle the, we can handle the maintenance side of it now, you know, in terms of, we know, we got a general sense we're going in that direction, you know, but we can basically bring the concept to you in August.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, you know, just want to, again, to reiterate, you know, it's okay to, with the blessing of council, to move forward, but once again, I really think the short version of the language within the ordinance, I think, would be good, and just make sure that, you know, within the education piece, we go into far more detail. I think it would be a cleaner way to do it when you think about an extremely busy ballot that may be coming up. So it's okay, let's march on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, at this point, any city council discussions or initiatives at all? Yes, Ms. Wooten.
I don't necessarily have an initiative, but I do have two quick comments. The first is, is one that I'm sure we all pretty much know, but oftentimes, we know certain things, but it's always good to express it publicly, and that is to the staff. I've been in several meetings, presentations, and during that time, I have had really excellent comments about staff, just how they are above and beyond, and go the extra mile, and I've really appreciated hearing that, those comments, and I'd like to pass that along to the staff so that they know, when I'm out, I hear great things about you, and how compared to other cities, you do an excellent job. And so I thought that was profound. The last couple of weeks I've been hearing, and then I just want to make sure that I pass that information along. The other comment is, is in regards to the Ignite Business Series event that's coming up on June 12th, that's this Saturday. This particular event focuses on microbusinesses. Although they're the smallest subset of small business, they are one of the most profound, because they do, in essence, although they have nine or fewer, employ nine or fewer employees, they do contribute substantially to our local economy by providing jobs, profits, bringing in revenue outside of the normal way that we do business. And so this series is going to, or event will focus on microbusinesses, helping them promote in terms of marketing and other areas concerning contracts for micro- promote in terms of marketing and other areas concerning contracts for microbusinesses. This particular event is also special, because there will be a vendor expo portion, which will give local businesses an opportunity to highlight what they do and interact with the public. And that will take place Saturday, 8:30 to 12:30, right here in the Virginia Beach Convention Center. Thank you to all staff that's been so supportive on this effort.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to make a comment. I walk on the boardwalk every single day, a beautiful boardwalk, and the landscaping and the flowers have never been more beautiful than this year. It's, they're absolutely stunning, and a lot of it's the groundspeople that have been taking care of everything, but maybe it's because we had a cooler spring and the flowers are more beautiful. But our boardwalk is absolutely gorgeous, and if you haven't walked it in a while, come on down and walk on the boardwalk and really enjoy the beautiful flowers.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if I can, you know, make a comment. The mayor has a discretion to call a holiday, and last year was the inception and, you know, initiation of Juneteenth, and we did call a holiday. Now, this year, it does fall on a Saturday. And I am inclined, but I did feel it was, would be appropriate to run this by council, that we, once again, you know, observe Juneteenth on that Friday. And one of the things that I think we should discuss further also is, you know, make, you know, the consideration of making this a, you know, a permanent holiday. You know, I think this is a recognition of the many employees that we've had that really have helped us get through a very, very difficult year. And hopefully, this is also a unifying thing, that we lock arms as a society and, you know, recognize that, you know, we are working together in commonality and community and unity. So with the okay of council, I would like to go ahead and, you know, make the recommendation that we do have, you know, the holiday on the Friday to observe Juneteenth. Mr. Rouse?
I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that forward. I will be in strong support of making this a permanent holiday throughout our city. I think it does a number of things. I think it brings us in parity with the rest of the cities of Hampton Roads. I think we're the last ones to not make this a permanent holiday. And so I think that would bode well and go well for our African-American community here within our city that celebrates this. And I think it also shows that Virginia Beach is taking a step in the right direction.
No, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Ms. Wooten?
I'd like to also say that certainly am happy to hear this, and certainly do support that the city is making this a permanent holiday. Thank you.
Okay, so with the blessing of council, Mr. Dehaney will go forward and, I think, and then we'll do what's necessary to have that, you know, robust discussion on making it a personal holiday. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. You know, Mr. Stiles, do we have to start the next meeting at 5:00 or...
I think you can do the informal and executive session before 5:00. I don't think you can obviously start the formal public comment before 6:00.
Okay, that would be good. I'll tell you what, if it's okay, I'll make the call now, and we could take a break and then come back. Would that be acceptable?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you actually adjourn the workshop, because it's two separate agendas and we've got to set up...
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to find out what I could do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this point, we will go ahead and adjourn, and I will go ahead and do the special reading first. Honorable members of city council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code, Section 2-21, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Tuesday, June 8, 2021, 5:00 p.m., Virginia Beach Convention, Suite 5, 1019th Street. The purpose of this special formal session is to allow city council to convene into a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A7, to discuss the Holloway versus City of Virginia Beach litigation matter. At the conclusion of the closed session, the city council will reconvene in open session for the purposes of certifying the closed session. And commencing at 6:00 p.m., the city council will take a public comment to obtain public input regarding upcoming changes to the city's election system resulting from the case of Holloway et al. versus the City of Virginia Beach and recent changes to the Virginia Beach state law. Citizens may comment either impersonally or virtually. If you would like to speak in person, please call the city clerk's office at 757-385-4303 to sign up. If you wish to make comments virtually, please follow the two-step process provided below. Register for WebEx at https://vbgovwebex.com, or register with the city clerk's office by calling 757-4303 prior to 5:00 on June 8, 2021. The special formal session will be streamed by the vbgov.com and Facebook Live and will be recorded for rebroadcast on cable TV. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the city council prior to the meeting via email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. And at this point, the chair will make a motion to recess into closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2, 37A7. Holloway et al. versus the City of Virginia Beach. Do I have a motion? Have a motion? Motion and a second. Could we call for the vote, please?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss is absent. Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Ten to zero.